Hello, everyone.
Hello.
Hi.
I think Bob sounds turned off. There's a little speaker with a red slash.
Bob, you're muted.
Can you hear me?
This is Kelly.
Bob, you're muted. Oh, there you go.
I'm on now.
Now you're on. Perfect.
Hey, Bob.
Well, my little gadget says I was unmuted and that meant that it's the only one. Okay. I'm glad to see y'all and hear y'all. Do we have to wait for our elected leader? Oh, we got two minutes left.
Yes, we have to wait for her.
Oh, yes, definitely do. Forrest, sorry to hear that you're lost, but it was an experience, I'm sure.
Oh, Forrest, you're muted as well, Forrest.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm not looking at it as a bad thing. You know, it was definitely a learning experience. Got my feet wet.
Yeah. Okay, well, don't take it as a personal thing. That's what I'm undertaking.
Oh, yeah, exactly.
I think you got two votes because I voted for you and I hope you voted for yourself.
I did. Thank you, Bob.
Eric, now that I'm talking to people, how are you?
I'm doing okay.
Kelly, I'm a little bit new. Who's Kelly?
Kelly. Kelly's from Sitka, Alaska. I just recently bought a home in the Dolls, so I'm new. My mother and my sister and my niece live in the Dolls, but I'm going to retire in the Dolls in 22 months, so I bought a home before the prices kill me. So I'm actually calling from Sitka, Alaska.
And you're attending as a guest tonight or what?
I want to just, I'm a guest, definitely, but I have a point of view that I would like to present.
Oh, the last lady we had from Alaska kind of scared me a little bit, but that's okay. Hello, Don.
Hello. I'm a nurse, so I'm friendly. I'm friendly.
And we lost Don.
I'm sorry. I'm trying to, I'm trying to, so my whole family doesn't have to listen to the meeting, but it's not working, so I guess they just have to.
They'll learn something, Don.
Right. They'll appreciate mom's job a little bit more. There we go. Okay, I got it.
Hi, Leader. Are you here?
I'm here. Let's roll. Sorry about that.
Is there any reason why we can't call this order to order at this point, Paula?
No reason.
All right. I'm going to call a meeting to order. I think it's about four o'clock, but that's close enough. And looking to the beautiful profile of people, we're about all represented today, I think. I would get roll call, Paula, and so you got it victorly.
Okay, Bev Eggie.
Present.
Forrest Ercole.
Present.
Eric Gleason.
Present.
Doug Leish.
Present.
And Bob McNary.
Here.
Donna Lawrence is absent and Scott Randall is absent.
Okay. Don, are you in a area where you can see a flag of any way, shape, or form? You did a wonderful job.
Standby. I'm sorry, this is a little cheesy, but just a moment.
It's patriotic. It's patriotic, Paula.
Sorry.
Who wants to lead?
I'm gone.
Okay, are we ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic. For which we are.
And.
One nation.
Under God.
Under God. Indivisible. Liberty and justice for all.
Right.
Thank you. Thank you, Don. Now, all I need to look at is, oh, we're back to real life now.
I'm disappeared.
Yeah. Yeah. I'm here. Don't know what's going on. If I missed something.
I think she just needed a moment there, Bob.
Oh, okay. Tell me when we're ready to go.
We're ready.
Oh, we're ready. Okay. Now we want to approve the agenda today. Who got on the phone now?
I don't know. I imagine they'll identify themselves when they want to speak.
Has everyone had a chance to look at the agenda?
Yeah, Bob.
Yeah.
If satisfactory, I'd like to have them all to do approval.
That's it. That's it.
Okay, Paula, you got some names for approval.
No, who moved?
Who moved?
I'll move to approve the agenda.
Thank you.
And I'll second.
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor say aye. Wave your hand and do something for Paula.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. We're going to approve the minutes of the October 28 meeting. And is anyone lacking a copy so they had a chance to read it?
Let's see. I had a chance to read it and I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for the October 28, 2020 meeting.
I'll second the motion.
Are you up to date, Paula?
I'm good.
All in favor say aye. Wave your hand. Wave your hand. Aye.
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 I don't see your hand, Bob.
Now, I'm going back to page one. Page one says this is the time for public comment. Do we have someone, Paula, that might want to give us some insight?
No, she wants to comment during the hearing.
Okay.
So I think we've temporarily lost her. Oh, no, there she is. Hi, Kelly.
I'm here. Hi.
She'll speak during the hearing.
Yeah, here's Kelly. She's got to talk to us. Be careful, Alice. We're tender.
Oh, you're great, Bob.
You're on the floor, Kelly, so.
Oh, I'm on the floor. I have permission to speak, so thank you very much.
You're really, wait, no, Kelly. Bob, Kelly's going to speak during the public hearing, so she's not going to speak now.
I didn't know what I talked to earlier if she was going to be a guest.
And Don, you're muted, so we can't.
No, I'm sorry. You aren't on the floor, Kelly. You're somebody else. So if there's no public comments, we will all, can you believe I knew this? Can I be excused for two minutes to get my rules and regulations or is that, I could pretty overlook that. There are another rule.
That's fine. How do you want to do it, Bob?
I'll move ahead. You can talk together. Bye.
How about that football team?
Hey, Eric, your building looks wonderful.
Oh, thanks. It took me long enough.
I know. That's like Travis House. The neighbors that go by or Chuck on the corner go by. He goes, it's taken 10 years. What are you going to change?
Yeah.
You know the feeling.
Yeah.
But we get there.
Yep.
What to tell you is I come back, these meetings are not really productive for anyone. In the middle of the afternoon, this afternoon, I was trying to get the squeak out of the microwave door and the next thing I had was the microwave door in my hand and I'm looking at, where the hell that thing come from? And so I've been quite some time putting the microwave door back on, but it's back to more functional. So I interrupted my train of thought per se. All right. Let's get back here on track now if I can. This is a public hearing for Landmark Commission application number 185-20 Star Touch Incorporated, 400 East Scenic Drive. And I am reading.
Bob, the application is 183-20.
Pardon?
Application number is 183-20.
Yes.
Okay.
And maybe my tunnel isn't working either. All right, here we go. Substantial criteria upon which the Starland Mark Commission will base their decision on this matter are obtained in the city comprehensive plan, land use, and development ordinance. A rough public hearing is required by law and certain rules apply. First and foremost, you must be recognized by the chair in order to speak and present testimony. When recognized by the chair, please proceed to the microphone and say your name, email, and address for the record. This is hearing is required by the law to be taped recording. Generally, the public hearing procedure is as, uh-oh, I lost myself. Okay. Prior to the public hearing, determination will make, I'm a qualification to the commission members and offer challenges from the audience. Having no basic audience, if there's anyone that wants to say they're not qualified, we're disengaged if you say it, so we'll go on from there. I will open up public hearing with a staff report. The purpose of the staff report at this point is to further identify the applicable criteria of the case being considered and to provide background information about the case. After the staff report, we will hear testimony from the proponents, those people in favor of the application. Next, there will be testimony from opponents, those not in favor of the application. Next, we will hear testimony from anyone else who has, who wishes to offer testimony or ask questions. Then the right of, then to honor the right of rebuttal, rebuttal, we'll begin here from those in favor of the application. To speak to hearing, the commission member may ask questions of the person as they testify. When this process has been concluded, we will close the public testimony portion of the hearing. During the hearing, some important standards apply. First of all, those who testify must hold their testimony to the decision criteria. As in all land use hearing, there are a complete set of rules, procedures, and criteria we must follow. Second, fail to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the commission members and the parties an opportunity to respond to that issue, produce the appeal of the land use data board of appeal based on that issue. Third, the failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues related to proposed condition of approval would be too specific enough to allow the city to respond to the issue foreclosed, procured as an action for damage to the surface board. Fourth, prior to conclusion of the public hearing, any participant may request an opportunity to present further evidence, argument, or testimony regarding the application. If such a request is made, the law states the commission shall grant it. Your request by either continuing the hearing to a time and date at least seven days from the date of the, the date of the initial hearing or the record must get opened for a period of at least seven days. Okay. That's a lot of forereading, a lot of foreunderstanding on my part. Are there any, those are the rules. Are there any questions about this public hearing? Hearing none, I will ask each member to state if they have any appetite. How they do, Don, contact. Are any of you people have something that you are involved with here that would keep you providing an unbiased decision?
Nope. No.
Hearing none, we will go on. If you're any one in the audience which we don't have, that wants to challenge us now, that's too late. Following the staff report, we will ask, the commission members will ask staff. Any, don't think there's anything else I left out that needs to be talked about. Don, would you present the application, please?
Excuse me. So the public hearing is open now?
Very, ask me again.
The public hearing is open now?
Yes, the public hearing is open.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you, Chair McNary and historic, yes. Thank you, Chair McNary and Historic Landmark Commissioners. As Bob just read, this application is from Star Touch Incorporated. They're seeking approval to provide a wireless backhaul for cellular service in the Dolls area by installing up to three small microwave wireless antenna that are going to be located on the roof of building one, which is the Columbia Gorge Community College. So it's basically the one that we are all looking at when you drive up scenic drive. It's kind of that, when you're down on scenic, you're looking up, it's the historic part. Property is owned by Columbia Gorge Community College. Applicant is Star Touch. The current use of the property is as a community college. Surrounding uses exist are, that exist are residential and its historical status is that it's locally landmarked. We did publish in the local newspaper and we provided notice to property owners within 100 feet as well as the state historic preservation office. As of the date of this staff report, we did not receive any notice or comments from parties or neighbors in the area. Staff is recommending approval with conditions based upon findings of fact. And what I did provide for you was a little bit of a timeline of tenants, which I thought was kind of interesting. I did a little digging and just kind of gives you a good idea as to what, how many varied uses that we've used for that college up there. And I'm proud to say that the current plan for that college and providing some sort of the skill center as well as the housing for student housing is underway and they are currently in the process of doing that. I'm not sure. I think Kelly may be here to give a little update on that. So the request before the commission is to install these microwave antennas and they'll be attached to the roof structure, but they will not be visible for the, from the pedestrian, so down from the street or at the pedestrian level. They'll be setback from the existing parapet walls and basically adjacent to other equipment that has been on the roof for years. Utmost care will be taken with the installation. So in terms of providing criteria for the Secretary of Interior Standards, the, I'm just going to go ahead. Most of these, you know, they're not changing the historic use or the use is not, with this application, excuse me, they're not changing the use of the college. They're not going to be removing or altering any historic materials. They, there's no plans that are going to create a false sense of historical development in the delux, and they'll make sure that the, they'll make sure that the application doesn't give a false sense of historical development and they're visibly, minimally visible, sorry. There's no plans for removal or changes that have acquired historic significance and that they're not planning to remove any historic features. The application does not include any repairs to the buildings and, let's see. Terms of chemical or physical treatment such as sandblasting, so I'm finding a seven, they do not, the application did not include any type of surface cleaning with this application. However, I go ahead and add that condition of approval per your request that any time that we have a historic building that we add the condition of regarding surface cleaning being gentle means possible. There's no excavation that's planned with this request. However, again, I do provide a condition of approval that does require any excavation that does need to follow the state and federal guidelines. The new addition or installation of three antennas will be installed using the gentle means possible and they're not going to be removing a historical character to the building. And finally, that the antenna will be installed in such a manner that they, if they're removed in the future, the essential form and integrity of the historic building, the roof will be unimpaired and staff has included that as a condition of approval. So conclusion is that staff's recommending that you approve the request before you today with six conditions of approval. And do you have any questions of staff?
Not seeing anybody raising their hand.
So we do have the applicant, yeah, we do have the applicant here today too, so we can, when you do the proponents, just be aware there is an applicant here.
So if we have no further question for staff.
There's probably a way to control the volume on that, but it's okay. Well, no, it's a little bit loud, but it's fine. He just has a kind of an unusual voice.
I get a little bit zoomed. It's wonderful. I just run out from dinner. But go back to where we was. No further questions to staff at this time. I would like to call the proponent to come forward and make her pick for why we should really be in favor of this. Kelly, you're up to bat.
So it's actually Joam?
Yeah, it's a little low.
Hi. Hi, Don. Yes, I'm on the call. Yeah, representing a Star Touch and so we are mounting, our proposal is to mount. Yes?
Give me your name.
Can you hear me?
Good. Thank you.
Oh, sorry. It's Joam Tolento from Star Touch.
I don't know why, just one way at a time.
So we are proposing to mount our equipment, our antennas on the building, scenic drive, building one. And it's to provide service to the area, to provide internet service to that area.
Thank you. I guess that was, I was looking for a little bigger picture, but that's a big picture and that's what we need. Is there anyone in the commission that would like to ask a question of the applicant?
Hearing none. I have a couple of general questions, I think. I don't think they're really going to affect anything, but I'm curious. Are these harmful at all with these waves that they're going to be off putting?
Wouldn't it be able to answer that question specifically, but we would be using the same type of equipment that is currently on the building.
Okay. And you said this is for internet. Is this for a specific provider or is this kind of general use for all providers?
It is for a specific provider, which is basically going to provide additional service within the network outside of just that general campus. So it's going to provide service to extend the network outside of the campus to areas that are currently not being serviced.
Thank you.
I have a question. Does the chair recognize me to ask a question to the person proposing?
Can I ask you?
This is Kelly Ferguson.
I know who you are. I'm asking you now. At this point of the staff as air and district, you have no one, nothing more to ask. I will call and open the meeting for proponents to this application. Is there anyone that's not in favor of it? Would they please speak up? So I'm hearing none there. Okay, now we have kind of an open meeting, Kelly, and you can tell us what you have to tell us.
Thank you, Bob. Does the chair recognize me to speak?
Yeah.
Kelly, I need your address, please.
My address is 1824 Jefferson Street, the Dolls, the Dolls Oregon 97058. But my mailing address, that's, that's my, that's the house I purchased, but my mailing address is P O Box 2713 Sitka, which is S I T K A, Alaska, 99835. Do you want my phone number?
No, thank you.
An email address?
No, that's fine. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Do you have permission to speak?
Yes, you have permission to speak. As long as you're speaking on the applicant, the applicant.
I'm speaking. I received the notice of public hearing and I am not a proponent of this because I did additional research on the wave frequencies that, that will be admitted, the EMF wave, wavelength frequency that is admitted by these three microwave wireless antennas. It is actually called, what my concern is, is called a tena sickness. And the standard distancing in Canada, India, Sweden, everywhere, is 400 meters or more to reduce the risk of cancer. The closer you are, if you're 100 feet, that's 30.8 meters. That is not meeting the requirements of safety for the frequency that is admitted by them, by the wavelengths. It also, it also is what angle are these, these antennas? Are they directly on the community on the, and they're indicating that they are going to be pointed in the direction 100 feet towards residential areas. A microwaveable EMF frequency this close will cause insomnia, hormone imbalance, skin issues, cancer. The list goes on and on. It is called a tena sickness. It is standard practice to be a little meters away from these microwaveable objects. If they're closer, they will cause cancer and serious health issues. So I do not support any form of microwaveable devices placed directly that are going to be facing the community where I live. It will be a safe, safety hazard for all residents in this area. The closer you are to this device, the sooner you will develop cancer. The further away you are, you might get cancer in four years, five years, but because we're less than 400 meters, we will develop cancer. It is not a question of we will get cancer, it's when and how fast we will get it. So it is a severe safety issue. If you place it on the facility like that, you're opening itself up for legal issues. People can sue the company and can sue the campus for allowing a toxic thing to be placed in their environment. There are plenty other places and distances away from residential areas where these three microwave wireless antennas can be placed that would not endanger the community at large. So I am definitely not a proponent of this. And even in India, they do not place wireless antennas and put them in front of buildings at all. They do not do that because they know the health risk. So my concern is that you're not being given the full extent of the health risk associated with the microwave wireless antennas.
So I'm going to go ahead and jump in here and Kelly, definitely everything you're saying, it's being heard, it's being recorded. This is the Historic Landmark Commission. This is the Historic Landmark Commission, and their job and their role and the criteria that they review deals completely with historic preservation and the integrity of the building in terms of historic components. This application will also have to go through what we call a conditional use permit. So when, once they gain approval from Historic Landmark Commission to place it, and that's for aesthetics only, has nothing else to do with all of the other stuff that you're mentioning, they will then have to go to Historic Landmark, excuse me, to Planning Commission to gain approval through a conditional use permit in order to place these roof mount antennas, microwaves on those roofs. So there will be another public hearing and another process that would deal with discussions that you're mentioning or bringing up. The unfortunate part is that the Historic Landmark Commission, their, their set of rules are this big, and then the planning command that deals completely with historic preservation and the building aesthetics. And then when you get to planning commission, that's going to deal with the more of the human element. So, I mean, we can go ahead and keep your comments in here, but I do need to let the commission know that today we are not looking at health, we're looking at the building and what will be placed on the building, and if, you know, obviously if there's any concerns, Kelly, definitely you will be invited to the planning commission meeting if you're within 100 feet. We notify within 300 feet for conditional use permit, so we'll actually have a larger mail out for that hearing.
Okay, well, even, even so, I do not support this, the antennas being placed on a historic building, so that's the first part, I do not support that.
Well, I think I have been deceived a little bit, but I have bad hearing. I think you really would be called an opponent to this application, and I asked you simply if you were, you wasn't, and so nevertheless, we have got the cat out of the bag now. We have this information in our file. That calls upon me at this point to call back for rebuttal from the opponent, I mean, from the proposer, or whatever, I'll get my name right after the application. So are you wanting to, or do you need to, Don, to argue this back and forth in front of this commission?
So, so, and Joam will, will be, it sounds like she isn't going to be able to give any specifics regarding the health component, but that will be, obviously, this will be part of the record that goes to the, to the conditional use permit before the planning commission. So Joam, if you would like to speak in rebuttal to the opponent's comments, you are more than welcome to, it's completely up to you.
I would have to, if it's possible, request if I can add my manager to this meeting, if it's not too late, to be able to answer specifically any questions that the Historical Committee might have.
That's, that's not a problem, definitely, they can come on in.
Okay, I, okay, I can do that. Okay, thanks.
Did I say that wrong, or were we?
No, no, she was just, she, I think she wants to provide some answers to Kelly today, which is completely fine, it'll be part of the record. And then obviously, they will be prepared when they do, if they do proceed with a conditional use permit to go before the planning commission, so all this information will then definitely be provided, and Kelly will be obviously given another opportunity to speak.
She was there, now is she coming back?
She's coming back, yes.
Hi, hi, are you there?
Yep, we are here.
Yeah, okay, hi, so I have my manager, sorry, I'll give you, I'll have him give you his information, and he's representing for Star Touch.
Perfect.
Damian.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Yeah, I'm actually a director here at Star Touch, and happy to talk with you guys about what we're trying to get set up down here at the college. From what I understand, you guys had some questions or concerns just about the microwaves that we actually employ.
Excuse me, before that, I need to get your name and address for the record.
Certainly, the name is Damian. Last name is Belvin, that's B as in Bravo, E L, V as in Victor, I N.
Thank you.
So Damian, this is Don Heard, I'm the senior planner, and I, before you answer or respond, I would like to you to know that we do have a pro, or an opponent against the application for specific health hazard reasons. This is the Historic Landmark Commission, and the commission does not review criteria such as health hazards. So I did explain that, you know, you're welcome to give some, a little bit of narrative regarding that, however, the Historic Landmark Commission will just be reviewing the placement on the historic building. The conditional use permit that you guys will also be applying for will be reviewed by the planning commission, and at that time, the health cares, concerns, and issues that Kelly's brought up will definitely be addressed, or would have the right forum to address those concerns, but you're definitely welcome to give, give Kelly some answers today.
Okay, yeah, that sounds completely fair. I think that, just looking at the antenna array that we're looking to, to deploy up on the college, from what I understand, it's actually identical to what was already approved for T-Mobile for, for their use, and so I just wanted to go ahead and point that out there. We're not doing anything different than what's already been done there. As far as the, the microwave dishes are concerned that we're using, you know, are basically up on top of the building, not really, you know, shooting down into any population centers to where people should be concerned with it, right? It's basically all up on top of the building, shooting away in, in directions that wouldn't really affect anyone. And then if we were actually talking about some type of, you know, health hazards, the microwaves are basically low level microwaves that don't actually propose any type of health hazard to anyone, and we have any, any documentation that you would need to back that up.
Thank you. If I may take the privilege of being chairman here, I think that before it was the commission consensus, we ought to come to some sort of an agreement amongst ourselves that we're doing exactly as our staff is right thinking, we're not considering anything other than the application of placing antennas on the roof of a historic building. And if I'm wrong, I'm ready to discuss it now before we go any further. Is that a bad request, Don? You can sell off, girl.
He's muted.
All right, that is correct.
So if there's no further questions of the applicant, and the opponents that've spoken, we've rebutted that, I'm gonna close the public hearing, and we are going to negotiate amongst ourselves as commissioners on this application to install antennas on the roof of the building, building number one, I believe, at the museum, I mean, at the college, and so, speak up, people, if you got anything you want to say, this is your chance to speak up and say your, your point of view.
Hey, Bob, this is Forrest. I think that we have to approve it because right now our guidelines really don't stipulate a whole lot of control on the rooftop, and we've discussed this a couple times in recent meetings, and since it's not going to be even visible at all, and it's not going to cause any structure support damage, or no, I think we have to approve this one.
I would agree with Forrest. If, if there's problems with the strength of whatever they're emitting, it sounds like it's gonna go before the planning commission, and they would take care of that aspect of it. So if we're, if we're only concerned about the looks of it and the landmark part of it, I would agree that we should okay it.
Yeah, that seems about right to me as well. It's not visible from public areas, and it looks like it's just gonna be kind of plopped down on top of the roof without any kind of attachment, so, yeah, I don't see any issues with it as far as historic.
I agree as well with the guy.
I didn't forget you.
Oh, oh, sorry, I was just, I was just agreeing with the gentleman that just spoke before, the, the other guys on the commission. I don't see a problem with the aesthetics of it.
I would gladly entertain a motion from any one of you to accept this application.
I'll make a motion to approve HLC application 183-20.
I would second the motion.
If there's no further discussion, please raise your hands, and we'll, for I.
I.
Hi. Thank you.
I will call for people that are voting against it, but I think I've seen all the hands up, so I can't vote twice, and we can talk about that over the speech TV. So this resolution, this application has been passed, and then we have no further applications this week for this meeting. I'm going to say let's go right to passing the resolution that goes with it. The application, I didn't see a whole lot of, what do I want to read, what do I call them?
Second edition?
Comments, or not comments, but points that have to be observed, but my resolution has them on here, we have seven, six, seven, seven of them, six of them. So if someone would make a motion to pass the resolution 172-20 with, tell me the word, I'm trying to think, Don.
Conditions of approval?
Conditions of approval, and there is six up.
I'll make a motion that we approve resolution HLC 172-20 with the six conditions of approval as written.
I would second the motion.
All in favor of this motion, please, the resolution, please raise your hand.
I.
I.
Anyone that disapprove, they can raise their hand, but you can vote twice, that isn't gonna get it. All right, that was not a hard meeting to conduct after a problem like paperwork. You, as staff, have anything that we should be familiar with at this point, Don?
No, I just, but I do want to thank Kelly, Joam, and Damian for showing up today, and Kelly, just be aware that you will be notified when they do a conditional use permit, and they'll probably be providing, based upon your comments today, some additional information regarding the potential of health hazards or issues that you brought up. So thank you, Damian, thank you, Joam, thank you.
I appreciate it, thank you very much.
Thank you. So other than that, Bob, I don't really have anything other than, we do have the list that you had mentioned last week, or last meeting about kind of the status of applications or previously approved applications. So Paula was able to pull together a spreadsheet, and I'm working on kind of filling in some details of, you know, status as to if it received a building permit, or if the approval went away, or if it's been completed, just so that you guys can see exactly what has been approved over the years, and it's quite an extensive list, and it's gonna take me a little bit, so I'm probably thinking, I'm hoping to get it done before Christmas, so you can get a nice little Christmas present from me.
Thank you.
Why, you're right there, you make your connection for Christmas. Well, we have our goal setting in January.
So, right, so that was what I wanted to kind of talk to you guys about, bumping into the next meeting date. We do have, the next regularly scheduled meeting is actually on Wednesday, December 23rd, and I don't know what everybody's availability is, if, you know, I am definitely, we can, we can wiggle, we can bump it a week early, like what we did this month to avoid the holiday week, or we can also take a look at having a special meeting in early January, or just have our regular meeting in January to do our goal setting, but that, that is definitely something we need to kind of talk about today, and what would work for the rest of the commissioners.
I think Kate Brown is going where we're gonna travel, I think we're gonna stay home, but I have no problem either way, if we want to meet December, take care of meeting week, January, the center goal setting, I'm, I'm open.
Any consensus, maybe like an, like a early or mid-January meeting instead, just to kind of wait until after the holidays, if somebody, that sounds better? Kind of wait till after Christmas? Okay, so let's.
It might be better.
So our regularly scheduled January meeting is, one, two, let's see, three, four, six, so that would be January 27th. Is that too late, or do you, is that, do you want to just go ahead and shoot for January 27th?
If you have an application that you're dreaming of, that somebody will have a application in the mail by then?
That could happen.
I don't want.
Definitely could happen. So the, I would say, either the silver lining or the downside of, of us having to do these virtual meetings and public notifications, not having a local newspaper, we, the lead time for public hearings and applications is extensive, so in order for anybody to have, we'd be in the next two weeks, we'd have to have an application in order to be considered at the end of December, so I think it might be the next week. So it's, it's pretty extensive, so usually we, it's almost, we almost say like a month prior to a hearing before, that we'd have to have everything in order to proceed. What was the date, Paula?
Cut off is December 2nd.
Okay.
The, the legal notice would have to go out December 4th, so we don't have much time.
Okay. So we, I will definitely, we'll keep you in the loop if we do receive an application, but at this time, I don't have anything in queue, or any conversations that I will be receiving anything.
Well, then, we're gonna probably plan on meeting the end of January, it will be early enough.
That sounds good.
Okay, now, Beth, you've been real quiet tonight, have you got anything to add to the collision functions that you want us to know about?
Um, nope. Just nice and quiet here with my wiener dogs and Mr. Eggie. Nothing too exciting.
Eric?
Let's see, I don't know if anybody else got to go to the virtual CLG meeting, I got to sit in on it some, and one thing that was kind of a little intriguing about those are kind of preservation plans for individual cities, which seems like something that SHPO is, is now kind of funding and concentrating on, and that seemed like a good idea to me. I know some cities that are kind of the same size of us, we're starting to work on those, so it might be a good thing for us to kind of pursue to get a preservation plan so that we can all kind of start working together and have kind of goals that we're moving towards and things like that, so, I don't know, it sounded like it's something that we could get funded through the CLG grant program, so I don't know how everybody feels about something like that.
Forrest?
Hey, Bob.
Hi, you got any one to tell us, how, how has it been to be non-elected, huh?
You know, it's actually a little bit, I'm a little bit relieved because it was gonna be a lot more time consuming than this meeting and my other little meetings that I have.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
I don't know, maybe you did, what I know, did you follow up with meeting with Eric so you can be caught up to date on the drugstore and the status of, and what the future is, and so on and so forth? Eric, we have that all on his thumbnail.
He emailed me, I think it's one of my unread emails that I need to follow up on.
Well, please do, because the more we can understand what's going on over there, the easier it's gonna be for everyone. I was, got a little education sending down in the old room, the model laundry or color whatever you want. I'd always dreamed that that would be the noisiest place in the world when Union Pacific went boop now through there, and it really wasn't, it was that old building, maybe enough bricks and steel, I mean, rocks there, but you heard the engines go by, and that was all you heard, you know, and I run over and looked out the window and wondered if he forgot the rest of his crane, but it was going by, and so that, that was an enlightening thing. and so that was an enlightening thing for me at that time. But anyhow, find out what you can about the drugstore, you borrow a hard position, we're gonna need a hard position. Okay, Doug, what's going on up the street here, two blocks, or a block and a half?
Not much new, Alan Eggie and I, the city has a program for redoing sidewalks, and you can submit a information on how much you would like to do. We made three proposals that that would be the sidewalk on the north side of the building, it's, and part of the sidewalk's literally gone, so we haven't heard anything back yet, but I hope we're gonna be able to replace the really bad parts, or maybe all of that sidewalk.
I pressed an application too, but I think today was the day they were going to open it. Oh, wait, it went away. I don't remember, Dawn, what was the day they was gonna actually open and start considering?
I was, unfortunately, the first time I learned about that was when I was in your kitchen, socially distancing, asking you to sign minutes, so I'm not sure about that.
Well.
It's out of my, out of my realm of knowledge.
Whatever it is, it's a step forward, and if there's some grant money that will alleviate the high cost of concrete for retired people, it should be welcome, and hopefully we can get it to go forward, that's my own little pitch, so. Any further comments from anyone? And if there are none, then the next thing I'd want to hear is a motion that we can adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, I thought I was gonna ask the night here.
I second the motion.
All right, all in favor say let's go home, and wait, where we are. All right.
Here we are, thanks everybody. Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
Bye.
Bye.